All right, thank you. Good evening and welcome to our Sacramento City Council meeting. I call this to order at 5:04 PM. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan, Councilmember Tao, Mayor Protem Talamontes, Councilmember Valenzuela, we expect Councilmember Gara momentarily, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Vang, Mayor Steinberg will be absent, and Vice Mayor Maple.
I am here. Councilmember Tao, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maydou Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwin-Win-Tu people, and the people of Wauten-Ranteria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contribution, and lives. Thank you. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. And we're going to start with a very special presentation today, which is from myself and Councilmember Gara. He is on his way, so I'll get, I'll kick us off, and if he's able to join us in the interim, then he will. If not, he sends his regrets that he wasn't able to be here to do this. But really excited about this, this program. Today, there was a, it's the St. Mary's College New Education for Women Leadership Program, and I had the opportunity, along with a couple of other really incredible women, to do a panel discussion for the students today in Midtown. And it was a very, it was very special. It was great to hear from the students and to get their perspective and also hear from a couple of the really wonderful women. So wanted to start out that way. So while programs like this exist on the East Coast, this is actually the first and only program of its kind on the West Coast. It's incredibly important that these current and future leaders have an opportunity to get directly involved in politics and government, and I see them trickling in now, welcome, and public service. So it was just, it was just an honor to be able to talk with them and hear their, their ideas and see, and talk about their interests in public service and government. So I joined them for an open discussion about running, discussion about running for office and why it's important to have women in leadership. And I'm incredibly inspired by these incredibly thoughtful and capable women that are filing in right now. And I also brought this up during, during the discussion, but I want to say it here too whenever I can. The first woman ever elected to the City Council in California was right here in Sacramento, as many of you know. Luella Johnson was elected in 1912 here at this very city. And we've continued to break barriers by electing a female majority City Council in 2022. And as I often say, it's only the second time ever, and the first time was before I was born. So is, that 2022 was a special year, and I have to say it's an incredible honor to serve alongside the women majority on this council, as well as all of my colleagues. So I am thrilled. I know that you're filing in, so I hate to put you on the spot so soon, but thrilled to welcome one of the co-directors, Professor Maria Luisa Ruiz. Please come to the podium, and you can share a little bit more about the program, and take your time. I know that you guys are filing in. Welcome. Take your time, no rush.
I feel like I'm lecturing in one of my classrooms. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Maria Luisa Ruiz, she/her's Yoegya pronouns. I'm a full professor at St. Mary's College of California and Moraga. I am one of the faculty coordinators for the inaugural New Leadership Institute at St. Mary's College in California, the first-ever program held in the state of California. New Leadership at St. Mary's, sponsored by the Women in Gender Studies Program, is meant to teach undergraduate women how to become actively involved in politics, advocacy, and public service. This inaugural cohort brings together students from colleges all across the state of California. This program has been more than three years in the making. It is truly inspiring to see the amazing group of students sitting beside, behind me today in this room, learning about multiple pathways to political engagement. On behalf of the participants, my colleagues, and St. Mary's College, we want to thank so many of you, especially Vice Mayor Katie Maple for this invitation, and all the members of the Sacramento City Council for welcoming us this afternoon. This recognition is incredible as we get this program off the ground. We hope to be here again next year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and really, really thrilled to see you all. It was wonderful talking with you today and looking forward to see what you do in the future, which I'm sure you will be doing great things, including maybe setting up a diocese just like this in your communities. So I'd like to invite you up to, so we can take a picture in the front here. So feel free to file in. And my colleagues, I'd love you to join me, all of you. Come join us.
I can take photos? Yeah, good. Are you sure? Okay.
Say, "Women in Leadership." No, excuse me.
Oh, my goodness. Thanks so much.
To start the meeting, thank you so much for indulging me, colleagues. And also, again, want to say for Councilmember Gara, wishes he could make it here in time, but he was stuck in traffic, but very much also from, from him. Okay, so now, colleagues, we move on to the consent calendar. Any items polled for comments, questions, or separate vote? Okay, I see Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just brief comments on 15 and 17, and then items 23 and 25. I'd like to poll for a separate direction and motion, but if all of us agree, I guess it could go on consent when I, when I bring it up.
Okay, perfect. All right. Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Thank you. I need to abstain from item number 16, just out of abundance of caution, because it's near my house.
Okay, noting an abstention from Mayor Protem Talamontes on item 16. Any other items for discussion, vote? All right. Starting first with Councilmember Kaplan, item 15 and 17.
Thank you. On item 15, which is our reduced residential development impact fees, I just want to thank our city staff for being innovative and understanding we have a limited amount of funds, and how do we make sure that projects understand they are getting those funding, especially when they are for affordable dwelling units, because a certain amount of predictability is needed. I just want to, if we can put a pin in it and come back next year at this time to see how did this work, and do we need to make any other changes to allow that flexibility? Specifically, some of my concerns are, we know costs are increasing, and are there extraordinary circumstances where somebody should get more than the $10,000 per unit cap? So just be thoughtful in that, as you always are, but would love to hear feedback as you guys have come up with a good idea. How can we, how we, can we make it equitable, and is it working how the way we, we wanted it to? And then on item 17, I'm just calling out while we have our insurance broker, and they've been with the city for 20-plus years and are great. We've had a 26% increase in contract costs since last year. So something to be mindful, and it's a little bit of ouch that costs are increasing, and that's part of our, our issues in the city. And then on consent items 23.
So you want those for separate?
Well, can I bring it up? And then if we need separate, I'm open to it. If not?
Go ahead.
On 23, 24, and 25, which specifically relate to removal of commission members for lack of attendance, this has been a conversation that we are currently having at PMPE. And what I'd like to do is remove these from consent and give direction to our clerk while we are discussing amendments to make clarity that we bring no more removals for lack of attendance, because some of it is excused, what's excused, what's unexcused, timing, schedule. I hate the, they have to resign, then we reappoint. Until we clarify, can, I, I would love to just pause, because this is an ongoing conversation legitimately. We just had, what, a week ago? Two weeks ago? Week ago. A week ago, that I would love for us to finish it instead of doing this, because it makes our commissioners feel awful, especially when some of them do have legitimate scheduling reasons. And Madam Clerk, is this okay? Do you need any other clear direction?
I think that direction is very clear, so we're going to remove those three items from this agenda. We're going to postpone, and I will not bring any removal reports forward. And so we will ignore that portion of the City Code, Chapter 2.40, in regards to attendance until the council has opined on it.
Okay, Councilmember Kaplan, do you want to make a motion?
Then I will make a motion with that action on items 23, 24, and 25.
And then noting.
And noting abstention on item 16.
So we have a motion?
All seven.
And we have a second by?
And Councilmember Jennings has a?
No, I, I, I.
Okay, great. Yeah, we're not, we're not voting yet. Just wanted to.
No, no. I, I pushed up in order to second the motion, so I'll allow the second to stay the same, that's fine. But I, I do want to support the motion, because I believe it's very important that we get consistency in this matter, so that we can then treat everybody the exact same way, and that there's no inconsistency, and that we, as a council, then know what, and commissioners know what the standards are, and they can then abide by them accordingly if they can.
That's a great point, and I also agree on that front. I know this got brought up at PMPE, but I think, you know, I know that the clerk is doing a wonderful job, and it's based on what's actually in the code, so I think it's incumbent upon us as policymakers to revisit that and see if there's something that makes a little bit more sense. So I do support that. Okay, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments on the consent calendar?
I have one speaker on item, Stephen Barasa on item 12.
Hello. This item for parking says, "These changes will help to regulate parking demand, promote turnover of parking spaces, alleviate congestion, and incentivize the adoption of alternative transportation methods." Now, we know this is a bunch of malarkey. You're looking for ways to backfill the budget deficit, looming budget deficit, so why not be honest with the taxpayers? Now, if we flashback in history, parking used to be free, and that's because the taxpayers already paid for all the streets, sidewalks, streetlights. We paid for everything. So they came up with this idea of creating parking revenue that would only be used for parking enforcement. And, and the reason for that was for businesses, so you could have turnover of cars and such, just like this item is stating here. And so it would be for parking meters, meter maids, and the administration of parking enforcement. We'll flash forward to the Golden One Center, and the city signed off on a big multimillion-dollar bond, and they changed the rules. And they said, "Well, now we'll use the parking revenue for the general fund, and it'll go to help pay for that bond." But now the cookie jar is open, and so now we're seeing. And what happened? It went, the time went from six o'clock, metered rates, to 10 o'clock. It started in the downtown core and expanded all the way to Alhambra. And now we, here we are today. We're going to charge on Sundays and holidays. It's endless. You still have a 24-hour day in a seven-day week to tax us. So you see the taxpayer where you're turning them upside down and shaking out every last coin. So what, you can generate a million dollars is what you anticipate? But did you take into account the businesses, the business loss, where the people in the suburbs, they can park for free out there? So are you going to take into account the loss of business tax revenue versus what you're going to gain from this unscrupulous item? So please reject that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers. All right. So moving for the, we had a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed, abstention? All right, that passes unanimously. And now we move on to our public hearing. Item number 26, oh, I think there might be a comment to move this. Is that right, Councilmember Tao? Okay. Councilmember Tao?
Make a motion for item 26 to be continued to July 30th.
To July 30th?
I'll second.
We have a second? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstention? All right, that passes unanimously, so we will continue item 26 to July 30th. Moving on to item number 27, vacation of the public utility easement at 2816 D Street. Welcome.
There he is.
Good to see you.
Good to see you again. Good evening, Madam Clerk, and distinguished council members. My name is Thomas Adams, and I'm with the Engineering Service Division of the Department of Public Works. The item before you is a request to vacate a public utility easement located at 2816 D Street for the purpose of approving a, for the approved seven-lot residential housing development. The public utility easement currently encroaches over several lots that are intended for future housing and is not needed to facilitate for any of the utility services. With this request, however, AT&amp;T does require future easement dedication be conditioned with this vacation request for utility, for utility service and access for this loc, for this location has not been determined at this time. City staff, along with various agencies, support this vacation request, along with, along with AT&amp;T's conditions to dedicate a new easement, as called out in the attached resolution of this report. The act recommended with this request is consistent with the 2040 general plan and is in compliance with the California Streets and Highways Code. Staff will be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no speakers on this issue of the item.
Seeing none, let's move over to the council member for the district, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. This is a really underutilized parcel, in my opinion, right now, so I'm excited to see this project moving forward and happy to open and close the public hearing and move this item.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Kaplan? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstained? That passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. And we move on to item 28, an ordinance amending section 15.148.920, and, and other sections related to planning and development. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. Kevin Collins, my name. I'm the zoning administrator for your fair city. I'll be giving the presentation this evening. Just by way of overview, we'll just briefly touch on what is an omnibus? It's kind of a fun word. The amendments that are proposed, the review steps to date, and our recommendation. I think of this as the fun alternative to miscellaneous. What is an omnibus bill? This ordinance covers a variety of topics. In Latin, this is "to, for, by, with, or from everything." So as announced at the introduction, there are many titles of code that are amended by this ordinance. They all have or pertain to planning and development issues. What is included in the ordinance? In very broad terms, there are three topics covered, first of which, for state law consistency. Where our code is silent or contrary to state law, we have proposed amendments to make our code be in harmony with the state law. So, and this is, since this is housing legislation from the 2022 legislative cycle. Streamlining, our provisions that exist in code today, this is existing policy where either the staff or our customers have informed our application of that policy in, in the regulatory sense, and we have identified ways to improve that policy. So we do have amendments that touch on various titles, some of which come from the Law and Legislation Committee to clean up a policy about digital signage for large entertainment venues, perfecting our fencing and regulations, for example. Thirdly, not very exciting, oops, there's a typo. So we do find, you know, humans are capable of errors, and so we're cleaning those up as we find them. So where have we been to date? We've been to a number of meetings required by code. This is amends Title 17, so we've been at the Planning and Design Commission in April, received a unanimous approval recommendation from the commission. Subsequently, to the Law and Legislation Committee on May 21st of this year, presented the ordinance, included some changes, and again, approval recommendation. More recently, we're at a pass for publication before you, where the contents of the ordinance as supplemented at that point in time were presented for public notice. And we're here today for the hearing. Our recommendation is that you pass a motion determining the ordinance exempt from SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, and that you adopt the ordinance making those amendments. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Excellent. Thank you for your presentation. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have one speaker on this item, Tiffany Clark. Ms. Clark, welcome.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Maple, council members and staff. Sacramento Attorney Tiffany Clark here urging a yes vote on this ordinance. My family and I are so grateful for council and staff tackling three of the four home occupation code sections that have so vexed our family over the years and have discouraged countless very, perfectly benign, indiscernible home office and studio businesses from getting started. I'm also grateful, we're also grateful for the interpretive clarification offered for the fourth code section and the commitment of the city to integrate a version of that clarification into the code language itself as soon as possible, while we do wish that could have happened by tonight. And there is another amendment included, proposed home occupation code section amendment included in tonight's ordinance that is of some concern. It, it carries on the tradition of completely banning certain home occupations, even though they could be operated in a benign fashion, rather than just focusing on regulating externalities. Even though those two things were the case, we would not want to see the perfect, be the enemy of the good enough for now. And we trust that needed reforms will continue to come forth in a, in a, in expeditious fashion, and look forward very much to working with the city and council as specific reform proposals are considered and finalized. Thank you so much for, for everything on this.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Appreciate that. And really appreciate staff for being willing to, to work with the public and, and all of us to make this a reality in a really timely fashion, too. So just appreciate that. And want to pass it on over to Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes, lots of small but very important changes that are going to have a big impact on a lot of projects and a lot of people across town. So thank you again, staff, for bringing this forward. Happy to open and close the public hearing and move this item forward.
All right, you have a motion?
Sure.
And we have a second by Councilmember Jennings. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. All right, so that passes unanimously. All right, colleagues, do we have any public comment for items not on the agenda?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I have four speakers for not on the agenda.
And just really quickly, while, while she gets those prepared, I just want to remind members of the public to please keep your comments germane to the, the issues of city council and the city business. Thank you.
First speaker is Julia Skiles, Ryan Misano, Jensen Ben Edra, and then Sam V. Vigent. Agentate.
I was going to write a speech, but didn't have the time, so I'll just say this. What I would like to see from the Sacramento City Council members is the respect to their constituents and people that they say that they fight for. When we come up here and speak our concerns, there's going to be those of us who have to say things that you guys may disagree with, and that's fine. I don't always agree with you guys on everything, but I do sit in patiently and gracefully, gracefully, graciously listen to you guys, say what you have to say, whether I disagree there or not. And I hope that you guys do the same for us. Free speech is under attack. When you guys shut us down or you turn your backs, it only shows incompetency from you guys. We're not seeing rationalization. We're seeing immaturity from a bunch of adults, a lot of you guys who are older than I am. And so I want our free speech to be protected, to be respected. We have concerns, whether you're on the right, the left, Democrat, Republican, it doesn't matter, there are concerns. Money being stolen from us, housing's a problem, homelessness is a problem, crime is a problem, and many other problems with that. If you guys choose to sit there and just ignore us and pretend like you're going to solve something and you're really not, then why are you even up there in the first place? Did you guys get voted in, or were you guys selected? So I hope that what I have to say does get taken into consideration, that you guys take us seriously, whether, again, you agree with this or not. At least just listen to us and know where we're coming from, so hopefully we can find common ground and not have to deal with the corruption that we see all the time. Thank you.
Give your comments, Ryan Misano, and then Jensen.
So I just want to talk about free speech as well, because if everyone here has ideas that they believe in very strongly, that's a wonderful thing. The beautiful thing about truth is that it holds itself up against fierce criticism. When that fierce criticism is silenced, you can't be sure that the truth that you are listening to is actually true. This is why myself being banned on Twitter and Facebook and millions of other Americans as well is such a bad thing, because now, when you are on those mediums, you are not getting all of the opinions of American citizens, which is why I would recommend every city in America to get off of Facebook and Twitter so we can have an open discussion. Because what's happening right now is we have those who wish to stifle free speech, and it's not a mystery, they're doing it right now, of who these people are. And what that does is it takes away everyone to consider what is true and what is not. Now, if what I say is wrong, it should be able to be easily refuted. Any of you should be able to say, "You know, Ryan, what you just said is wrong. Here's the truth," and you should be able to publicly do that. Not a single one of you has ever, and I've been coming up here for a year, ever done anything like that. If I ever stated non-factual information, you were never able to refute what I said. So if we disagree, this idea that you just shut up, I'm better than you, one council member does that routinely, this, this arrogance, this conceit, the, it's, it's very poisonous. You can't really have a conversation with that. When one person thinks that I'm a queen and nobody else needs to, and I don't need to listen to anybody who criticizes me, we have a problem. We're all equal. We all came into this world, created equal. We're going to leave it equal, too. So if you can't listen to other opinions, that's a problem that needs to be fixed, Lisa Kaplan, and yes, I'm talking to you.
Please do not address councilmembers by name. Please address the entire council.
Okay, so please stop doing that. I could talk to any individual council member I want.
Your time is complete.
I can talk to any council member I want.
Your time is complete.
Keep that clear, and stop doing that.
Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Jensen Bez Ezra Kuvachaya.
Jensen, welcome.
Thank you, city council and city manager, everyone, for letting me have a chance to speak. And I, I'm not supposed to address anyone. City council, everybody. Basically, I have a few issues. I'm trying to get off the subject. I mean, off, long story short, I want to thank you guys for everything that you're doing in the city. It's, it has to be very hard to run a city like this. It's, it's, it's not easy, and even my simple job, you know, is always tasked that, even I'm a professional, there's tasks that always come, that give me a challenge. So I know you guys dealing with challenges every day, and I appreciate just standing here and doing what you have to do. Okay, I want to put a, a subject, is I've been trying to get a subject on agenda about the old Sacramento docks. So I have to, I've been trying to contact my city council member in District Four, and it's been unsuccessful for me to get the topic of the old Sacramento docks ordinances on, on agenda. I was told by the assistant city manager that that's not an agenda item, so if possible, I need to get some type of clarification. I need to get some type of clarification. But also, my family lives in our houseboat in Old Sacramento. We've been living in our houseboat for a few years, off and on, mooring at the old Sacramento docks. They have a plan to close the docks on Friday, and they said they will take our boat from us if we're still moored there. We just got approved for our veteran benefits, so we're going to be able to get a VA loan and get a home very soon. So that's a good thing. It's just I might need a little more time for us to take care of that situation for my family. I have four kids. I don't have much time left. I want to, if possible, get the ordinances on agenda, if possible, from my District Four, if possible. Thank you for hearing me out. Out of time.
Thank you for coming to the city council. And if that's okay, Assistant City Manager Laura, would you mind connecting with him, please? Thank you so much.
And our final speaker is Sam V. Agilent.
Hello. Yeah, my name's Sam Ann Janet, and I went to the pharmacy to pick up some meds, and they were closed, so I left the Target on Fourth Avenue. And a man raced through the crosswalk in front of the store, ran into my shopping cart, went and parked his car, went to my car in handicap parking, I'm disabled. He came over and attacked me, beat me to the ground, was kicking me in the head, pounding on my neck. They took me to jail for self-defense. And then when they figured out that they screwed up, they didn't take me back to my car a week later. They threw me out in the street 11:45 PM in the rain. I'm disabled, I can barely walk. Fortunately, there was a bail bondsman across the street, and I got him to call a cab, and I had a couple dollars and got home. That's the police, you know, totally threw me under the bus. When they realized they made a mistake, they didn't do anything, they didn't apologize, they just threw me out in the street in the rain. That's my first complaint. Then, I moved here to grow marijuana for dispensaries, because I'm disabled and I could do that in my house. Became illegal, so I quit. I'm disabled, I have no money. Everything's sitting there, minding my own business. Next thing I know, January 5th, 5:00 in the morning, I have the police, two tanks, a SWAT van, 50 more police officers pointing guns at me, because I have a medical marijuana grow. I'm not selling marijuana, no criminal charges were ever pressed, and they fined me a whole bunch of money for a bunch of tiny little pot plants. The police are laughing at me, telling me I will never see my house again. They're so proud of themselves. Daniel Loether falsified a lot of the code enforcement man and made me pay for a permit to do a total remodel on my house when all I needed to do was...
Your comments, your time is complete.
Oh, well, that was my second thing.
Mr. City Manager, is there someone from your team that can help assist?
Yes, Assistant City Manager Lani Milstein can help you. She's in the back, she'll connect with you.
Go talk to her.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And now, colleagues, we move on to ideas, questions, comments, and AB 1234 reports. We'll start first with Councilmember Bang.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have just a follow-up direction ask and then some announcement. The first one is, I wanted just to follow up on the hiring status of a language equity and access coordinator. I know my understanding is that interviews were conducted, and then there was a hiring freeze due to the budget, but it was passed for next year. And so I just wanted a status update. Actually, I'm making this request on behalf of Councilmember Gera and I, wanted to know what the status update on the hiring is, next steps for implementing the position, and hopefully this summer or fall at the latest, just because we want to make sure we get that going.
Yeah, I'll follow up and I'll provide you an update.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. And then just some announcement. We have our first summer free concert in the park at Metta View this weekend. The event is from 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock at Metta View Park. We have, there's going to be live music, family-friendly activities, and encouraging everyone to come out. That is this Saturday from 5:00 to 8:00. And then before that, from 11:00 to 3:00, at the McRoe Valley High Community Center, there is a Fourth Annual Dana Meisha Resource Fair, so encouraging folks to come out to that as well. And then, as you all know, every Sunday, we have our weekly farmer's market at the Metta View Light Rail Station, so encouraging folks to come out. It's open from 8:00 to 1:00. Come out and support your local farmers and vendors, and yeah, have a great beginning of July summer, because this is our last council meeting until after council recess, so just really wanted to wish everyone a great summer.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilmember Tao.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Wanted to make some announcements before we go on recess. You know, summer is here. The Robinson Waiting Pool is open, so that the community know it's free. It's free for you to take the kids out there, 3225 Norwood Avenue, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. The Johnston Pool is also opened, and at 231 Eleanor Avenue, from 1:00 to 5:00 PM, as well as the Grant Neen High School Pool. It is open this summer. It's also free for Twin Rivers Unified School District students, and so you have your school ID, you can go out there and enjoy the pool for free. And then saved a date for July 20th, along with my office, Brothers of Strength, rebranding U Inc., and the Mutual Assistance Network, we are hosting a community event. And council members, you are all invited to join us as well. We will have food, community resources, and a concert, entertainment, and we'll be at the Robinson Community Center, 3225 Norwood Avenue, 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. And so looking for the community to join us. We will have performers and CBOs there with resources.
Wonderful. Sounds exciting, and try my best to make it. And thank you for the invitation. Okay, Mayor Protem Talamontes.
We have our first movie night this Friday at the South Natomas Community Center to go watch Cars, so invite us to join us. And I did a police ride-along on Friday for 12 hours, from 2:30 to 12:30, almost 1:00 in the morning. And I had the chance to meet Officer Daisy Castro, who was just so incredible and just, I got to live a day in her life. And it was just incredible to meet her and her patience and who she is and her story and why she decided to become an officer. So just thank you, Captain Chandler, for pairing me up with her, and she gives me help for the future.
Wonderful. All right. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Couple of announcements. This Friday is our District One Swim and Movie Night, where we partner with the city at the North Natomas Aquatic Center. The movie being played is the Disney movie Soul. Free swim starts at 7:00. Movie begins about 8:15, and it is, as well as free entry, we're providing popcorn, so bring your swimsuit, change of clothes, blankets, and chairs to join us at the North Natomas Aquatic Center. Saturday, as you know, every Saturday through September, we have our One Natomas Farmer's Market and free yoga from 9:00 to 10:00, but the farmer's market is 8:30 to 12:30. And then we're going to be on break, but I am happy to partner with Councilmember Tao. We are having a D1, D2 movie night at North Point Park, and it is Dora and the Lost City of Gold. So come join us for that as well.
Excellent. Councilmember Jennings.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I've got a lot of announcements to announce, since we're going to be on break for a little while. So I'll start with the music in the park at Curtis Park, which is taking place Sunday, June 30th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. You should bring your blankets and just really try to find a spot where you can listen to the incredible music that's going to be by Unsupervised. That's right, Unsupervised, they're going to be, again, once again, at William Lynn, William Curtis Park. And plus, I'll be sponsoring for the kids who may not be interested in the music. I'll be sponsoring face painting for all the kids who show up. A group by the name of Behind the Scenes Face Painting will be doing it for our kids. So bring your cameras, because you're going to take pictures of those kids getting their face painted. All right. Want to also let you know about the Pocket Parade that's happening on July 4th. That's next week, and we're gearing up for an incredible event. Some say it's the largest in the city of Sacramento. We just want to make sure this is an event that you'll remember for the rest of your life. Registration is now closed, but everyone is welcome to come and watch the parade and participate in all the activities. After the parade, we encourage you to stop by Goshabend Park to enjoy some of the delicious food from Sacmoto Food Trucks and live music from our very own Sharp Family Trio. So it's going to be a great time. If you want more information, especially about road closures on that day, visit july4thpocketparade.com. Once again, that's july4thpocketparade.com. And then finally, in the month of July, we have a series called Jazz in July. If you're into jazz, you're going to love this series. The first night is just slightly outside of the month of July. It's going to be on Friday, the 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Williamland Park in the Panhandle. Enjoy the beautiful music of Jeff Minnewether. It's the Jeff Minnewether Quartet, and this is an opportunity for you to get your friends and family out there and have a wonderful time in the park. And then the second part, second Jazz in July, will take place on July 12 at Marriott Park. The third, July 19 at Goshabend Park. And then the fourth is July 26 at Bell Coolidge Park. So we got the whole month of July pretty much covered. Every Friday, if you enjoy jazz, this will be an opportunity to come out, enjoy free jazz. I see you shaking your head. That's good. Come on out, and we're going to make sure you got food out there, lots of camaraderie with family and friends, and just beautiful people enjoying music in the park and having a wonderful time. So those are our announcements, and I hope to see you there.
A lot of really exciting things. Thank you for that. And then for the face painting, does it only have to be children? I mean, if I roll up, can I get my face painted? That's all I'm saying.
You can be the biggest kid in our group, and we will make sure, if you got to see him in front of your name, I'll pay for that personally.
All right. I'll wear that like a badge of honor. People often call me a big kid. All right. So very excited to wish everyone a happy summer as we head off into summer recess after this meeting. We have a couple of exciting things. I am very bummed that I'm going to miss the parade in District Seven, but we are having our very own Hollywood Park Neighborhood Association. Fourth of July Parade starts at Hollywood Park Elementary at 9:00 AM on July 4th. I will be, of course, dressed like Lady Liberty, like I did last year, so if you want to come out and see me look silly, you can join us there. It's a lot of fun. And one of the neighbors actually has an old, like, 1940s fire truck that they have refurbished, and they drive around, and it's a lot of fun. So come join us if you can. And then we are also doing our, on Saturday, June 29th, so coming up this Saturday, we're doing our Mangin Park Ice Cream Social and Free Pool Day. So come join us. The ice cream social is from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at Mangin Park, and then the pool entry is from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the Mangin Park Pool. So please come join us. It's going to be a lot of fun. Recommend swimming first and then eating the ice cream, but, you know, do as you wish. And, oh, yes, and then I have one other really exciting announcement. You know, we were able to announce this via press conference this last week, but just want to let the community know that with the partnership of Senator Angelique Ashby[1763.92]